He's.
He's a good guy.
I'm just.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order.
Not get proud of it, but you know.
It is seven o'clock. Today's the fourteenth of November two thousand twenty-three. We are in the municipal meeting room. And I'll start with a roll call from the far end.
Lee J. Feldman, Town Planner.
Marty Kane.
Tom McGinn.
Paul Green.
Rich Gannon on the planner. I'm not the planner, I'm the chairman. Don't confuse me. We have before us the approval of the agenda. And on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We have time for a public comment. We have new business. Five seventy-seven Old Post Road subdivision, a sketch plan application. Then we have a trotty paving site plan review application. We'll have the planners business, which has some proposed amendments to the land use ordinance warrant. We will continue to review those. He has some updates for us on workforce housing. And for the month of December, we're gonna have two meetings. We're gonna have one on the fifth and one on the nineteenth. And then we're gonna, we're gonna have one on January tenth and the second one on January seventeenth. We're gonna skip right over, unless you wanna come in on the second of January.
No.
Yeah, I I felt exactly the same way, Marty. So since we've all, since we're, we've only had one meeting in the month of December, we're gonna have two in in December to tie everything up.
If needed. If needed.
If if needed, yes.
Weather permitting.
So that, no, no, no. That only if the sun comes. Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda or change the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Marty Kane. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. The first item on, uh, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for September nineteenth. You should all have had them in your packets.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as written.
I'll second that.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Public comment. This is that time in the meeting where if you are a member of the public and you have something that you would like to to bring to the board's attention that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. And and since I see such a great mad rush toward the microphone, I'll assume that nobody has anything and we will proceed on from here. New business, five seventy-seven Old Post Road subdivision, a sketch plan application. The applicant HKG LLC is proposing to develop a five lot subdivision on tax map fourteen lot five A. The parcel is twelve point eight acres located in the R three and BI zone. The project will consist of five single-family homes. The proposed project will be accessed by a private way approximately three hundred feet in length. Paul Gadboy is the applicant's engineer. Take it away, Paul.
Do I have to push the button?
Yes.
Only, it it needs to be on green.
Lights on?
Lights on.
All right. Yeah, my name's Paul Gadboys. I prepared the sketch plan that you have in front of you this evening. I'm working for HKG LLC, which is Stephanie Natto owner and also Stephanie.
Paul, can you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm working for Stephanie Natto, who is the HKG owner of HKG LLC and the owner of the property. Um, it is twelve point eight acres and she's proposing to subdivide this through the cluster ordinance subdivision and create five lots. All the lots will be approximately twenty thousand square feet in size. And why is everybody moving?
We don't think the mic, we're not sure the mic is working.
It's working.
Is it? Can you hear him?
Okay, it's this background noise that's making it very difficult.
Where's everybody going? All right, so um, I guess the biggest concern that we need to talk about this evening is the net density requirements. And you can see Stephanie wrote a two-page letter describing her thoughts on how the net density requirements apply to this project. Basically, she's saying that the net density development doesn't, isn't required for residential houses. So if you read her two-page letter, we could certainly go through that. She's gone through the ordinance and informed have her opinion as to her requirements that this needs the plus of lots subdivision. So I guess we need to go through net density and make sure that we're all on the same page and that the minimum lot size is acceptable to the planning department.
Paul, you also provided as part of the submission, the conventional design. So they may wanna see that as it relates to what you're proposing from a cluster standpoint.
So the conventional design basically requires the minimum lot size to be at two acres. And frontage requirements in that zone is, um, I think it's two hundred feet. So the conventional plan showing how the lots would be created to meet the conventional subdivision standards. Obviously, not that practical, but it will work. We have to cross the brook and the stream. Lot A and lot B are certainly, uh, work well. The red line is the setbacks from, um, the Verno Pool. So we have actually Verno Pools in the property. So this red line is a twenty-five foot setback from the Verno Pool. The other smaller red line is a hundred foot setback from the Verno Pools. A DEP does allow us to go up to a hundred foot from significant Verno Pool. So those lots would be viable, in my opinion. Um, so that's how I came up with the conventional sketch plan. And obviously, you know, we're not putting a whole lot of time in conventional because we really need to work on cluster because that's the ideal way to go. But I believe that conventional plan would work. Need a stream crossing permit. Never been denied a stream crossing permit to access uplands for a subdivision. Again, setbacks from the grown up pools, uh, we will meet those setbacks a hundred foot minimum and preserve the remaining land as open space. So that should satisfy DEP requirements for construction within the Verno Pool area. Yes.
Take it. That that's not the preferred layout.
No.
Yeah, so whether it was a cluster requirement or not, you'd you'd rather have something like like this other option.
Yeah, we, I worked pretty diligently with Stephanie to create these lots. The ordinance says that for a cluster subdivision, lots cannot be smaller than twenty thousand square feet. So these lots are twenty-five thousand square feet plus or minus. Um, each lot has areas for septic and a reserve septic area. We already did the test pits. So we see a septic area and a reserve septic. Um, the well locations can meet the setback setbacks from the proposed septics. It's has to have a small wetland fill and we will need DEP permits to do work within seventy-five feet of that stream. Um, I don't see that being an issue to get the permit from DEP for both of those. But the basic thing is make sure that we are on the same page as far as being, um, minimum lot size and net density requirements is. So if I have to do net density on the project, that may change the number of lots, obviously, to five to four or who knows? But net density is very important.
Well, net, net residential density is defined in the subdivision. And it makes a reference to the net residential acreage. It says net residential density is the average number of dwelling units per net residential acre. Net residential acreage is the total acreage available for the subdivision as shown on the proposed subdivision plan minus the area for streets or access and the areas which are considered, uh, unsuitable for development. So the wetlands is unsuitable for development. So if there's wetlands on the property, she has to back that out in order to come up with her.
The way, the way I believe that she's reading and she can't be here tonight. She's out of town. If you look at the minimum lot size in all the hour zones, residential zones, they don't speak of net residential density. So she's looking at the tables that are in the BD one zone. Uh, we'll say the BD two zone. Um, all those call for net residential density, net density for minimum lot size. You look at the tables in the residential zones, they don't call for minimum lot, net, net density requirements for minimum lot size. So that's how she's interpreting interpreting it. I guess we had to make a decision as to.
She is interpreting it incorrectly.
Okay, that's what we need to discuss tonight. So if you read a two-page letter, I'm not sure you guys probably read it.
I did.
Okay. So that's where she's coming from. It's not the the table doesn't require net density development.
If she, if she looks at the definitions, both in the subdivision regulations and in the the land use ordinance, they both say essentially the same thing.
I believe she said she did, but I will take the board's opinion as to.
So definitely.
Their interpretation.
The definition of net development, I think you read it. Maybe, Rich?
I did.
Okay, so I mean, yes, and you're actually looking at the R three zone itself, not the BI zone. Because BI does not allow residential development. Um, but R three is where all of that development is allowed. So you're gonna have to do net residential density calculations based on just the R three zone and eliminate, you know, the wetlands, uh, wetlands, watercourses and slopes in excess of twenty-five percent. As well as the road. The road right, right of way.
That's Paul, that's on page nineteen of the land use ordinance?
Yep, page thirteen of the zoning ordinance.
Yep, Paul.
Lee J, did you guys answer her, her letter to you guys?
Um, as, as, as you know, I don't normally address, um, sketch level plans. It's really for the applicant to present to you folks.
Okay.
So I don't do any kind of critical review on that at that point.
No, I didn't know if any nicking provided back to or on this.
No, no.
That's one. All right. Very good.
Okay, so let me see if I understand this. Uh, in the, uh, DB, in the BI zone, single-family residents are not permitted.
That's correct.
Unless it's, uh, associated with commercial use. Unless it's associated with the commercial use.
Yes, uh, unless it's incidental to commercial property.
So this particular site has five acres in the BI zone. Eight acres in the R three zone. And so we're not gonna, we can't count any acreage in the BI zone for, for resident, for net density for their, for their single-family lots.
That would be my contention, yes, because they are not allowed unless they are associated with the business.
Even though there's BI zone is unacceptable, it's not accessible to anything else. You can't, this zone line can't change.
In order to change that, we'd have to take the ordinance to the town meeting and get it changed.
Was there something, I know there was talking and in the past, there was something that said if there's a split parcel in in two zones, whichever one was the more predominant zone is, was the one that you couldn't. Um, that would apply to the ordinance. I don't know if that's.
Lot splits by district boundaries. It's on page five, two point four. When a lot is divided by a district boundary, except the boundaries of any overlay district, the following provision shall apply. Number one, if any portion of the lot can meet the minimum lot area and minimum lot frontage requirements of the district in which it's located, then that portion of the lot shall be governed by the district regulations in which it is located. And number two, if a portion of the lot is smaller than fifty percent of the total lot area and cannot meet the minimum lot area, excuse me, minimum lot width requirements of the district in which it's located, then the entire lot shall be governed by the district regulations of the district, which comprises the largest portion of the lot. So it really is talking more about a single use on a parcel than it is talking about a subdivision development.
Well, I, I don't, I don't see that as a single use. I just thought it would be whatever the applied, applied use would be. Right, it, that's, that's. Right, that, that, that's my, uh, point is, is that back parcel is landlocked.
There's no road frontage.
No, it'll.
Not business.
So, right. So what do we do about that? It just just exempt.
Falls under.
But right, so, right, so number two is when I say the entire lot shall be governed by the district regulations.
Of, of the.
Of the district which comprises the largest portion.
So you also wanna look at the definition of, um, net um, acreage, net residential acreage in the subdivision ordinance.
Yep.
And that definition says the total acreage available for the subdivision. So the BI zone is not available for the subdivision. That's page four of the subdivision, Rex.
Yeah, page five. Yeah, so she'd be, she'd be running into, into the issue that the BI district does not count at all, any of the land.
She won't be happy. But because, you know, she's pretty adamant that.
Based on number two, Lee J just read, the greater of the two lots is, is the BI district. And none of that, none of that land qualifies for that residential acreage. She can use what she's got that that is in the R three zone. But she's restricted to whatever that residential acreage comes out to be.
Doesn't seem fair. I mean, you're looking at a piece of property that is just being this land is useless unless and her butter wants to buy it, right? From Route One.
Yeah.
Certainly depending on where it is in relation to everything, it might be something she'd wanna look at possibly giving off to the, um, land trust. Um.
So that area can't be used as open space for even the residential subdivision. Can't be used.
Can be used as open space, can't be used for the density calculation.
Paul, the relation to Old Post Road.
Yeah.
Okay, where is this relationship to?
Route one?
Yeah.
That's the discord with us.
Yeah, what I was saying, okay, going on Old Post Road.
Yeah.
How big is that?
Very large.
I think it's in the house from the ISON development, ISON.
Yeah.
Development.
You have a golf club?
Or golf, yeah.
No street lanes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so no street lane.
No street, no street lane. Yeah.
Yep.
Paul, how much, how much acreage is in the R three?
Say again?
How much acreage is in the R three?
The R three has seven point eight acres.
I'm sorry.
Seven point eight.
Seven point eight, okay. Yeah, it would be difficult to get, she could, she could get three, maybe four on, on a good day, but then that depends on what she's got for, for wetlands that are in the R three zone.
Yeah, I think I calculated, um, in the R three zone, taking out the wetlands, um, two point four lots.
Which wouldn't have to be clustered if it was only two houses.
If it was only two houses, she wouldn't even have to come here.
Right.
Well, let me see, I have seven point one, oh, I got it, like, seven point one acres net after you subtract wetlands. So the minimum lot size, I should have that zone.
Two acres.
Two acres, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But that's.
Oh, I was thinking two family, that's why I said that. So the single families, it would be three.
Three houses.
Yeah, yeah. I would go into two family.
So it's three houses. But under the new, um, regulations, there's also an opportunity for three ADUs associated, one ADU associated with each house.
Have to be connected?
I'm sorry?
They have to be connected?
Have to be connect, no, under the, under the new law, they can be in, in the home, attached to the home or a separate standalone unit.
But they have to be the same parcel.
Yes, correct.
And have the same owner.
Yes.
And have the same.
Correct.
Correct. It would be an accessory unit.
For the mall.
Yes.
And what is the max? It's eight hundred square feet?
I believe that's what you set the limit at, eight hundred square feet.
Is that our limit or is that the state?
That's our limit. The state only set the lower limit of a hundred and ninety square feet. Um, every town sets their own upper limit.
That, that depends on how they wanna market it.
Of course.
I, it's, it's just, it's just another, I hate to say it, it's another workaround for her to be able to get six units.
Right.
Um, under the law, the way it's now allowed, so.
Okay, so I tend to agree with the board. I was just telling you what her thoughts were.
Yeah.
And so, um, obviously, net density requirements, subtract the wetlands and these deep slopes and the right of ways and everything required to get that density.
Assuming that she's looking to sell all of these pieces of property.
She says she's wants them for her workers. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, she, uh, she has talked with us for the last couple of years about trying to be able to accommodate her workforce.
Right.
If she wanted to accommodate her workforce, she could prob, she could put down two duplexes down there, couldn't she? And get four units?
Sure.
The ADU should be a good option.
Along with it.
Right, because that's what I had, I had two point four duplexes or three single families.
Well, if, if she puts, if she puts a duplex, if she's got three lots, if she puts a duplex on, because it's, it's one and a half for the, for the lots, she'd get two duplexes, four units.
And the ADUs.
And the ADUs to go along with it. So that, that might work for her.
It shouldn't.
But she, but she is faced with the, the net does, net density and it's only in the R three zone.
And the ADUs do not count against, against net density.
Perfect. So, yeah, she could have two duplexes if she's, instead of five single families, yours would be two duplexes, that's four. And then you can still get two ADUs.
Right.
Which would be six.
Studios or.
Right.
Small one.
Yep. You've answered my question. I know that she was pretty adamant. She wrote you that two-page report and.
I think it would be four ADUs. One for each of them.
Yes, right.
Uh, it's, yeah, it's possible. I mean, the, the ordinance did not stipulate any difference between duplexes and single-family homes having ADUs, so.
Yep.
Yes.
So she could have, she could have two duplexes and four ADUs?
Yes.
Geez, it's awesome. So, uh, obviously, there'll be two separate lots, which will be a lot easier to.
Paul, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, you know. I'm having problems understanding the first paragraph, two point four. Says if any portion of the lot can meet the minimum lot area and minimum lot frontage requirements of the district in which it is located, then that portion of the lot shall be governed by the district regulations.
Yeah, true.
The business one should be covered by the R three.
No, because we, because it's divided by a lot line.
What lot line?
I thought that was all one lot.
It is one lot.
It's divided by the zoning line, not the lot line.
Right.
All one lot right now.
Yeah, I don't.
And then if you go to number two, it says a portion of the lot, if a portion of the lot is smaller than fifty percent.
That is.
Which it is, right? The front lot is seven, the back is what, five?
Yeah.
Is smaller than fifty percent of the total and that, and cannot meet the minimum lot area or minimum lot width requirements in the district in which it is located, then the entire lot shall be governed by the district regulations of which, of the district which comprises the larger portion of the lot. So why wouldn't that back part be governed by the R three? And then be able to be used for the calculations of that whole thing? Minus, of course, the wetlands, which I know she doesn't agree with.
Right.
That is clear, I think, and the road.
Am I missing something?
All right.
It would be my opinion that that language is very specific to like a single use on a single parcel. Um, I would wanna go to Leah and ask her for her interpretation of that. Um, it doesn't really seem to work for a subdivision because it talks about the minimum, a minimum lot area and lot frontage, which would suggest it is a single lot. Um, requirements in the district in which it's located.
Yep.
Um, and then that portion of the lot shall be governed by the district regulations in which it's located. That really seems to me to suggest we're talking, um, a parcel in like the DB one where the split by DB one, DB two type of situation on a single parcel that we might be looking at. I really don't see that it's, that it's set up for subdivisions um, in that respect. And, and even if you interpret it that way, the issue that we still have is the BI zone does not allow residential.
Yeah, but.
I, I understand, but.
Become open space.
It can, it can be open space today. It can't be used towards the density requirement because it doesn't allow residential.
Can, can I just add one more thing to what Paul was saying? The number one says if any portion can meet the minimum lot requirement or minimum lot frontage, then she'll be governed in, in the district in which it's located. Well, fact is, it cannot meet, it cannot meet that requirement. There is no minimum lot funding. There's no frontage at all to that back section, so it can't be governed by that because, because it doesn't meet that.
Well, but we're not talking, I, I hear what you're saying, but we're not talking about the back lot. We're talking about the lot in which the development is proposed.
Yeah.
Um, that's why, I mean, if you want, I will go to Leah and I will ask her for a clear interpretation of that language and how it relates to a subdivision.
I think, I think that would be a good idea. So then, if nothing else, going forward, we'll at least have Leah's opinion as to how we should interpret this.
Yep.
Yeah, because it sounds like the owner's asking.
This, this hasn't happened for a while. We, in fact, when we redrew the lines, the district lines, we, we tried to uh, we tried to correct that by going around the property lines.
Right.
However, there are other parcels similar to this.
Yeah, you guys, you pick what, one thousand feet from Route One, I think is what you picked, right? It sounded, I came in.
Well, so if you don't prevail, if you don't happen to prevail, in spite of all the red type, um, you still have four, uh,
Yeah, I mean.
duplexes and four, I mean.
Two duplexes and a fourth ADUs. Yeah.
She'll end up with eight, eight living quarters, if you would.
I mean, she probably really wants single-family residences on a separate lots. But, you know, it is what it is. Hopefully, um, Leah will come back and say we can merge it and call it off and use it all, but if not, I, I know that we're gonna.
Option, Paul, is she can come back and petition that that zoning line change, right? But it would take a while because it would have to go back.
June meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, we, we, we wouldn't get it there for the June meeting.
Well, unless there's another special meeting.
Well, the other option that would be available is, is if we had, um, Jim Nagle write the opinion um, as being discussed tonight. And she could file an administrative appeal with the zoning board of appeals and have them, um, make a determination.
Right, yep.
Because that language is in the zoning ordinance, it's not in the subdivision regulations. So they could appeal any interpretation of the zoning ordinance.
Sounds like some options there.
Yeah. I think that's the only questions I had. I'll let her know what the news is tomorrow and let her take it from there. But hopefully, you'll be looking into that question. That would be awesome.
Well, we, we, I think we're all clear that the wetlands have to be subtracted for.
Wetlands.
Yes, yeah. I was pretty clear on that, but I was going by, my client was pretty adamant.
Client, yeah.
Black is the messenger.
Yes. Uh, thank you so much.
We all know what happens to him.
Through the text, yes.
Like the lot size of the cluster development, the way that I read on page one fifty nine of the zoning, table twelve point two or twelve two, the maximum lot area reduction is only allowed to be fifty percent of the district. But no less than twenty five thousand square. But the district it's in is R three, but the lot size is two acres. So shouldn't all those, even if it was a cluster development, have been one acre lots?
What, what page do you want?
Uh, it's supposed to be in that of the zoning ordinance, table twelve two.
You know, that's, that's, that's probably a really old ordinance, one fifty nine on my page is dealing with mineral extraction.
Uh, what's the, what's the numbers like, the paragraph and section numbers?
Yeah, sorry, uh, so.
It's in, it's in the cluster. Yeah.
Well, this isn't a conditional use, this is a subdivision.
Well, but it's the cluster development.
If you look in the cluster development, he's absolutely right. It says in the table, um, based on the soil classifications and the minimum lot size.
What's the citation section, Paul?
Uh, it's page one fifty three.
No, what's the citation, nine point three point what?
Nine. Hold on.
Nine point three.
Nine point three point twelve. Table twelve dash two.
Yep, okay. That's based on soil classifications.
Right.
So have we done any soil tests yet to determine what the soil?
Yes, we have.
Why aren't they on the plan?
Or are they? I turned in the uh, map. I turned in the high intensity soil survey.
So you've gotta deduct that all based on, um, based on soil classifications?
Absolutely, but her opinion is, it says, but no less than twenty thousand square feet, but he's, I believe he's absolutely right. You can only do fifty percent of the lot size.
Yeah.
Exactly, she's using, she's seeing no less than twenty thousand square feet and that's what she's proposing.
Yeah.
I worked pretty hard to do the twenty thousand square feet, um, and it probably won't matter anymore cuz now they were taken out, figuring out net density, but it does say no less than fifty percent of the lot size, so that would be an acre.
Right.
So your soils are class eh, one?
Class one.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, he just did uh, class one to the brook. Cuz that's where the subdivision taking place right now, but. Very good. Eventually, everything goes to the golf book, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Lee J, I have a question.
You look at the USGS map.
So if that's correct, and the lot, the minimum lot size then instead of twenty thousand square feet is really an acre.
Yep.
Does that make the question of the two separate uh, divisions uh, of a B one and an R three moot?
That, you mean the BI?
BI, I mean.
Um, I don't believe it does, um, I also think that, that while you're, you're interpreting this as the minimum lot size being, you know, one acre, I think you're also needing to look at it as a cluster development, so the lot sizes can go down lower, but the total acreage and number of units needs to equal whatever the total lots are that would be required or, or would be allowed, so.
Basically, basically, if I had to get five lots, I'd have to get five, one acre lots or five lots, I can only have five lots.
So, well.
Once I say the, the two acre threshold.
Let's say you drop the, let's say you drop the lot size to, to twenty thousand square feet. And it says you need to have one acre per lot. The other, the other twenty thousand square feet, cuz we talked forty thousand being an acre for development purposes, just needs to be attributed to the open space in that zone for that.
No, I don't think that's what it says.
Yeah.
I think it says, I think it says that you have a two acre lot size, you can't do more than fifty percent reduction in lot area for the minimum.
In, in the R three and R four districts, the amount of dedicated open space shall equal or not exceed fifty percent of the net residential acreage, but may be reduced to, to uh, reduced at the discretion of the planning board to no less than twenty five percent contingent upon the conformance of the project design. That's in, that's in.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think that's.
That's in nine, three, twelve. C, uh, yes, nine, three, twelve E, excuse me.
If you look at dimensional exemptions in the cluster ordinance, it says lot size may be reduced. However, the total area below it has to, you know, be added to common space. In the R three and R four districts, the amount of dedicated, oh yeah, it's equal, I'm sorry, fifty percent. But you go to that table, it tells you that you can't be smaller than, you can't have a two acre lot down to twenty thousand square feet, it has to have a minimum of an acre.
But, but, but that, that table, Paul, that table is based on soil classification.
Correct.
Nothing else.
That's right.
I, I. I think the table trumps the, the twenty five percent.
I think, I think, I think if you had a forty thou, forty thousand square foot zone, you could go down to two, fifty percent of it, you'd get down to twenty, but if you have to have a lot that was less than forty, they'd say you, you can't go less than twenty, but this is, these are two acre lots, and if you look at the maximum lot reduction, it says in that table, the maximum lot reduction is based on those soils, right? So you have to have a class four soils to get to twenty five percent reduction. And then you get fifty percent reduction, sixty seven percent of reduction and fifty cent, but no less than twenty five thousand square feet, so that's what the twenty five thousand came up to. But if you have that soil classification, you're only allowed fifty percent of your, of your lot size.
You would.
Right, but no less than twenty five. So, so if I have a two acre zone, can I go, the twenty five is what she believes she can, cuz it says no less than twenty five. Or it's really fifty percent, which is an acre.
Well, I'm confused with this table.
That's where we're coming from, right?
And maybe, maybe. Class four is twenty five percent, and then it, uh, each one higher than that, it gets progressively uh, larger in percentage.
Right, class two has sixty seven percent.
And then class one breaks that.
Class, uh, class two is also a well drained soil, so that's why it jumps to sixty seven percent.
Does it say that it's well drained soil?
Over table twelve one.
Right. Over on the bottom of one fifty two, it shows class two being well.
Okay. Alright.
So, Liman Bedrock is class one. So we have a, and then Rainham is class five, which is wetlands or whatever it is.
Poorly drained.
Poorly drained.
Yeah.
So if I'm in Liman, which might according to just the median intensity, cuz I don't have time to go through the high intensity to figure it all out yet, but I will. I'm in, I'm in class one soil group, right? Class one soil classification says.
Correct.
Maximum lot reduction is fifty percent.
So, Paul, um, PJ.
But not less.
But not less than twenty five.
That's right.
So she believes that we can do twenty five.
This isn't gonna get resolved tonight.
No, of course not.
So there's no point in going any further trying to figure out.
Correct.
What the gods were trying to tell us when they.
The gods didn't write it, you guys did.
Well, you guys is, is a general term.
It was before I showed up, I, I finished it for you, well.
So what's the best plan to proceed? So, you're gonna speak to.
I'm gonna speak to Leah.
About the.
Yep.
Uh, two districts.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then.
I mean, if, if the two, if, if she goes in a different direction and says the two districts can be used, then I think that's gonna take care of a lot of stuff, because now all of a sudden you're working with much more acreage.
Okay, so let's go there first and not do all of this because.
Yep.
We're on, we're not on bedrock here, we're on shifting sand, so. Let's go to Leah first.
Yep.
And then we'll revisit this whole thing, what do you think?
Again, that's fine with me, but this table will have to be, if she says we combine this, which is great, my client's gonna say, I want five twenty five thousand square foot lots. Right, cuz you know, that's pretty much where we're gonna be at again. So we need to kinda know, this is pretty critical to the equation.
Well, so you don't have any actionable news to deliver to your client right now?
Okay.
So, I think that, we could save for a little bit.
We're getting an opinion from the town attorney.
Yes.
As to the classification of the BI district.
Yeah, perfect, thank you so much, I knew it was gonna be confusing. I saw that table and I'm saying, I don't think you can do twenty five thousand square foot lots, but maybe your intentions were to allow that. I can make it work though. I mean, it works.
Bye, Paul.
I think there's a conflict, I think there's a conflict between this section with the soil types and the twenty five percent and the cluster subdivision, they, they don't seem to be.
Yep.
Okay, good luck.
Okay, on to bigger and better things, at least I'm sure that that's what David and Anthony think. Trotia paving site plan review application. The applicant, Anthony Trotier, is proposing to construct a six thousand five hundred ninety two square foot four bay commercial garage on Heavy Hammer Lane. The parcel is tax map four lot twenty three C in the ARD zone. The property owner is BDF Holdings LLC and Jonathan Malloy, PE of Saint Germain, is the applicant's engineer. Take it away, boss.
Hi, uh, my name's Jonathan Malloy, uh, Saint Germain, representing Trotier Paving, uh, Anthony Trotier, uh, owner. Um, we are submitting this site plan uh, for approval. It is lot twenty three C, um, off of Heavy Hammer Lane, um, which is off of Route one eleven, um, past the intersection at New Road heading out west. Um, the building will be a four bay uh, garage with metal siding and an asphalt roof. Um, the left two bays will be occupied by the owner and the right two bays will be contractor storage rental.
So there's no entrance off of one eleven?
Correct, no.
You're gonna access it through.
It utilizes Heavy Hammer.
Yeah.
This is part of um, the larger development with uh, BDF Holdings.
I remember it well, and so this is the piece that he sold off.
Correct.
Or is selling off.
Yeah.
To the right, if you're facing one eleven, it was in that corner to the right, yeah.
The hashtag labeled as future development on these plans, is that future development that you're planning or is this coming out of BDF?
Correct, no, there's a, there's future development uh, planned for this site.
Okay.
Uh, as well, yeah.
Is that future development anything that you already know about or just with something that speculating?
It, for a little bit of speculation, trying to figure out what the market will kinda dictate with, um, you know, mixed use or commercial only, um, just trying to figure out what will be, will work the best, um, after this.
And what's gonna happen to the property that is in question right now that hasn't uh, is in violation, are you gonna sell that, Anthony, or are you keeping that?
No, no, that's, that's my residence.
Right, so that it won't be.
Jump garage.
Good.
Well, one of, I think one of the conditions, uh, that I would like to see imposed is that you don't use your personal house property at all. Not, not for business. I'm sorry.
Would, don't use my residential property for anything?
Right, for business.
What, what about, um, I mean, I, I use skid steers around the property, I will have trucks in and out, behind the time for my own personal use, is that a big problem?
And if it's your personal use, then they're not business trucks, are they?
Well, I mean, it would, it would be a truck that I use for commercial purposes too, but if I need a skid steer or really a skid steer excavator at the house, I would need to drive that truck.
Yeah, that, that's reasonable.
That, that would be, be reasonable, what would not be reasonable is for you to bring a skid steer and, and a, a, a front end loader and, and a bunch of trucks up there and leave them there.
Oh, I think that.
Equipment will be stored on this.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's kinda what we're looking at, because we've been waiting for this, for the other application on one eleven to get cleaned up and it has not been cleaned up. This turns out to be the plan and it's, but it's been five years coming.
Yeah.
So we'd let, I, I'd like to see it just go away.
I had just joined the board and it was, it was happening then, yeah.
Well, you're working on it now, so.
That's right.
Good.
So should there be a timeline, do you think?
Yeah, when we get, when we get to that point, we can put in a timeline.
Okay.
And, and specify.
So, before we go further, I wonder if you could just explain what the use will be, the, what, in the buildings and, and in the, like, the number of parking spots and all that.
Yep, so the left two bays, uh, you can see here, um, orientation wise, that, that will be for Trotier Paving, uh, there, there's a usually partition here, but it's uh, cut out. Um, so the middle, you'll be able to, to access both bays, um, from either this side and there will be two roll up doors on the front, um, and then there will be a full partition between each of the next bays, which will be contractor storage, uh, with one roll up door and one, um, personal entry door, um, each will have lighting. I believe on the, the application it said five lights, um, that should be eight. Uh, we had five when it was just going to be a two bay garage, but we added the additional two contractor storage base, so the total light number goes up to eight.
And, and you know that, that they need to comply with the, the low cutoff.
Yep, yep, dust till dawn, um, yeah, they have the low projection.
Okay.
Yeah, hooded, um, thirteen spaces, I believe. Uh, it's one space required for every five hundred square feet of warehouse.
Okay.
Um, so that, that would be twelve, but round up, um, just, you know, um, employee parking.
Mm-hmm.
So Anthony's.
How about some of the vehicles, will, are they, they gonna be parked on site when, not in?
Commercial vehicles?
Yeah, of course, okay, and how many of them? Will there be?
Four dump trucks, um, two to three smaller trailer pulling vehicles, one small tractor trailer.
Okay, and there's room for all that, look, okay, good.
That's a perfect spot for it.
Yeah, it is, it is, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's sufficient uh, topography and existing vegetation for screening um, in the front, uh, and on the side, there's a single family residential uh, to the east, um, but there's, there's a lot of vegetation between this site and that, um, as well as, you know, a decent amount of slope.
So, uh, will you be leaving some of the, that vegetation there?
Correct.
Yeah, cut right to the line.
No, um, and Lee J, I, I think you had a question about um, some screening as well, towards the front. Uh, we propose for ten arborvitae's uh, to, to kind of conceal the entry um, and entrance portion.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Is that a residence out, out front on one eleven?
That is a.
Or is that a business?
Combined, I think, there's a residence and a business there.
You'll be screening anyways, but.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of vegetation.
Good.
Yeah.
Through there.
Used to be, used to be a doctor's office, didn't it?
Yeah.
Which is very strange, strange place for a doctor's office.
Yeah.
And since you, you're working with, with uh, Ben, you buy it from BDK, um, your.
BDF.
B, BDF, okay, uh, um, you're. B, BDF, okay, you're. By Fitzgerald, so you're, you're, you're already talking with him of, if he has any needs, I think what, what I'm wondering is that he'll have. The, the campground. And I, I don't know if your business will impact what, what is.
I think we're on the same page.
Good, as long as you be a good neighbor and, yeah.
His business is gonna be. Up on the left from where you're at.
Correct, the, yeah, the, the large warehouse, I think that has some public access. For the campground and then there's a smaller warehouse. Yeah, there's, there's a few.
His dad is gonna have an apartment in one of those buildings.
Yep, it's above the larger warehouse, I think, so, yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of use on this parcel that didn't have anything on it. Originally, yeah.
Good place.
Yes, Li Jie.
John, I have a question I have, we never really talked about it at all. In your design work, have you projected that there's gonna need to be any blasting occurring in order to, for the building to go in? I had a conversation with, with Sean Labby today, who's doing site work for BDF. And they're gonna be doing a pre blast plan, because they will be doing blasting over on the other side and I didn't know how that might come into play with this site.
I think that that would incur, occur in conjunction with this.
So he's gonna do some pre, pre-site. Work for you and, and maybe some of the blasting to get the site somewhat into shape.
Sounds like that's about the way it's gonna.
Oh, okay, I just wanna make sure that, that that gets addressed if it has to, but it sounds like they're already gonna be doing it.
Yeah, there's a couple of visible pockets, which.
Yes.
And a couple of spots, you can see the high topography there, so there will, there will need to be some of that done to accommodate this.
But do you guys are planning on putting a septic system in between from both quarters?
Correct, yeah.
Whereabouts are you planning on putting that?
For preliminary purposes. There would be a tank. Off to the east of the four bay garage. And then that will follow up to a disposal field downhill from. That and the future development, so that's outside of the hundred foot setback from the wetland, which is what is required.
Yeah, it's there on the plan.
So also tonight for. Would be, because this isn't a sketch where it's a site plan review, so you'd be looking at. Potentially finding the application complete and setting a date for the sidewalk if you feel you need one in a public hearing.
Well, fires. Fires being complete, this is very thorough.
Yes.
So, uh, do you know of anything that, that is missing?
No, from a submission standpoint, and John has been working with us off and on for. Several months actually on this and so it's, I mean, from a submission standpoint, it's complete.
Good, well, I, I will make a motion on.
Hang on just for a second, I wanted to, I have a question I wanted to ask.
Okay, while, while you're coming up with that question, I have a quick question, there is no public water going by here, is there?
Unfortunately, no.
So, so have you done some, any test sites?
Not yet, you know, that's, that's in the works.
Okay, yeah. How many acres is, is the lot?
Three point nine eight.
Okay, so you should find something.
Yeah.
Before, before we go ahead with your motion, I have a question. I have a letter from the fire chief that indicates that there is no water source within twenty-five hundred feet. That is required by the ordinance, or you have to sprinkle the building.
It's, we're gonna have to go the sprinkler direction there, yeah, it, we, I interpreted that a little differently with the twenty-five hundred foot radius. We, we were just on the edge there, but for purposes, the chief and I met. And he explained that you can't do the radius approach, you have to do a direct path, so. Yeah, yeah, you know, that's, that'd be a little tough.
Remind that it's one eleven, good luck getting across it.
Exactly, yeah. So yeah, right now it's, it's planned to be sprinkled.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's what Sibago did on the large warehouse as well.
Yeah, way get better insurance rates when you do that.
Yep.
Might help a little.
Yeah.
Are we missing anything?
I don't believe you are from a standpoint of completeness now.
Find the application.
That was, that was gonna be my. Before I would interrupt it, you can second me though, so, I'll, I'll motion that we. A move that we deem this complete.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to deem the application complete, is there any discussion?
Yeah. On your. On the two bays that you're running out. The gray area there, now that they have rear access because you have the front door and. Also rear access for. Safety. Are those. The back of the building, are they gonna have rear doors? Entry type door, not drive through door.
Right, so there, there's a roll up bay and there's a, an entry door on the front of each of those.
Out back of the building. So now you probably also have to have an excess. Out of the rear of the building.
That's, that's really driven by the performance codes of the building code and fire NFPA code, it's distance of travel. That would be require a certain secondary access and that's gonna have to be addressed when they look for their building permits.
Okay, yeah, currently, no, there wasn't, so.
I'm just trying to give you.
Yeah.
A thought, I mean, you can do it on the side. One side, you know, you can have a side entrance, but in the middle. You can't have a side entrance.
Right, yeah, the middle bay would. Yeah.
That's why I'm mentioning it.
No, thank you, that's, yeah, we will, we'll take that into consideration.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous, congratulations, now we can work on setting up a public hearing and a sidewalk and all kinds of other fun stuff. And in, in terms of sidewalk, we should probably do that, I'd say sooner rather than later, but it's already late. It's dark.
Weather and darkness. Yeah.
When, this, this Saturday or the Saturday after Thanksgiving?
I'll be.
What's the weather report for this Saturday?
We're gonna have rain this Saturday.
Fifty-eight degrees this Friday.
Yeah. Well, is it gonna be raining this?
It's supposed to be raining this Saturday, yes. So what do you want, you wanna do it on the?
I'll make a motion, we do a sidewalk on the Friday after Thanksgiving, twenty-fourth. In the morning, nine o'clock, work for you guys?
Uh, I, I will, I'll be out of state.
Yeah, I thought this Friday, but.
I, I wouldn't.
After Thanksgiving, you guys won't be around?
It'd be tough.
Okay.
So why don't we play the weather by ear? For Saturday.
We can't, we have to post it.
Oh, okay.
How about, how about the week after?
Which is December.
Is it possible to do it this Friday with the warm weather?
No, we can't, we, we don't have enough time to post it.
So much time now.
Sure. Um, yeah, it's a Friday, but I might be back.
So if we were to say.
I can do Saturday.
December second. Saturday, December second. It gives us enough time to post it. It gives us enough, we'll, we'll be able to, to set it on the agenda for the, for the, the meeting in December. So that we can, so that we can review things.
December nineteenth would be the planning board meeting, if you can get your plan, if you. Feel you'd be ready.
Yeah, you'd have to get the plans in by the fifth in order to.
If there's any revisions or anything needed, I mean, it's a pretty complete, again, pretty complete application, so.
Yeah, it's a very, very nice.
If we do it for the first of the year and you wouldn't have to come back, you'd have your sidewalk public hearing.
Are you okay?
And you'd make it for the meeting.
We do the sidewalk on the second, then why can't they do it on the fifth if they're.
Cause they have to have the plans ready to go, but they should be able to.
We're not meeting on the fifth.
We're not meeting on the fifth.
Oh, not, yes.
It's on the.
Okay, I'm sorry. So yeah, if, if we do it, if, if you can get the, everything over to Li Jie within the next thirty-eight seconds. We'll be, we'll be able to put it on the agenda for the fifth. In fact. We'll take the position that if we, we can put it on the agenda for the fifth and in, in a worst case scenario, we just have to table it to the nineteenth.
But I'm, I'm not seeing too many changes needed, so.
No.
It would definitely be done, so by, after the new year and you'd be good, you know. You'd have all your ducks, you'd get all your toys over Christmas.
Well, I'll make the motion, we have the sidewalk on the second, that's, you guys can make. Yeah, as long as someone can make, December second, nine o'clock. Okay, that's a motion.
Seconded.
Motion's been made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Paul Green to have the sidewalk at nine AM on December second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? It's unanimous.
And the public hearing on the fifth.
And a public hearing on the fifth, yes, that, that's the next.
A motion, we have a public hearing on the night of December fifth at our regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn to have the public hearing on December fifth. At the start of our regularly scheduled meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
So then, um, the, the, that public hearing on Saturday, that.
Yes, yes. Assu- assuming that nothing shows up between now and then and you don't change the plans radically and put up the Taj Mahal or something, then yeah.
Uh, nine AM?
Nine AM on the fifth, uh, the second, sorry.
On the second, you're getting everybody confused here.
I'll stop now.
A regular scheduled meeting time on the fifth. Then you guys should be good.
I'm blaming you, it's that California vibe.
Too much sunshine.
No, when I was in California, I had no idea what day it was.
Alright, you're all set.
Thank you guys, thank you. And next on the agenda. That's not the right one.
That's it?
No, 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 there's more stuff on the agenda, we've got Li Jie with the ordinance.
Well, I didn't bring my copy in tonight, it's still over on the other side. Didn't know how far you wanted to go with that.
Now, talk to us about that, what is the workforce?
So, yeah, I mean, I. Um, so there's been a request made by the Kennebunk Port Housing Coalition. To see if, um, the town of Arundel would be interested in partnering on. Developing workforce housing project. I think that Keith had also mentioned it to me with support. We said, sure, we can at least take a look at, you know, what, what areas of town might be available, um, that the town owns property. To see if that is something that is of interest, mutual interest. Keith has floated that with the select board. And they are showing interest in at least moving forward, I mean, I think that there's a lot of due diligence that's gonna be needed, a lot of. Discussion. With the housing coalition, before anything really comes to fruition, but Keith did ask that I mention it to you folks. To see if there's any red flags or issues that you, that you see, I mean, I'm not, we're not in a position yet to even discuss sites. But to see whether, you know, it's something about entertaining workforce housing.
It, it's, it's really needed. I mean, it's just crazy out there, just trying to find anything.
Is, is workforce housing any different, affordable housing? Because I heard that the, the selectmen wanna, wanna have a. Joint meeting with us to discuss affordable housing here in the town.
So I haven't heard that, which is fine, I don't, you know, know some of that stuff, Keith did not mention that to me. Um, you know, that's a, that's a great question, what is workforce housing versus what is affordable housing? I'm not really sure that there is a difference, it's, it's, you know, play on, on language. What affordable housing is not, is it's not section eight low moderate income housing. There are stipulations under HUD, federal housing and urban development. That determines what affordable housing is, it's thirty percent of your, your gross income. To be spent on, on rental housing and then there's another percentage that is spent if you're purchasing a home. So it's not really any different than, than workforce housing. But certainly it's geared, you know, this would be geared towards, you know, the teacher, the firefighter, the. Anybody that's, that's mid, you know, what we would know as mid, middle income, basically, and.
Is this, is this like for them to own or to rent it?
Don't even know that yet, um, don't, don't, don't even know that yet. I think it's, it's very early in that process. I think at some point, probably Keith and I would be sitting down with them to start to flush ideas and issues out and. Maybe, you know, indicate a site or two so that they could start doing any due diligence that they would need to do before anything ever happened.
Question.
Yeah, Marty.
Now. As we just heard from my first applicant. Project. Would this classified workforce housing? Because it was. Fact is, it's setting up housing for. The customer's work group. I mean, does that give us? Any other? Rules, regulations? Changes or anything else along the way?
Not unless, the, not unless on the board and we wanted to make amendments to go to town meeting with. So, I don't wanna get too deep in the weeds, but the LD two thousand and three issues that we dealt with. If we had. Public water or public sewer in certain areas, we certainly do along Route one, that's the only location. Then we could look at creating multi, um, multi-family development. Requirements of two and a half times the density of whatever the base zone is. Which would be probably higher than anything else we allow in town, but we're not in that category to require that. Under the state law, unless the town said for some reason, well, we wanna do it anyway. That isn't what I had proposed for you folks because you didn't meet the requirements of the law.
It's too bad too, because all the storage units that are going up, that would really. Benefit everyone if that was used towards this kind of thing instead, but whatever.
Yep. But yeah, that doesn't mean if, if that's something you wanna look at, now we can develop something locally to propose. For town meeting if we, if, if it was something that was of interest to you, um, there is, there's a model out there because of the. LD two thousand and three requirements, so it would not take a lot. For me to throw something together. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna pursue that unless there's a real yes, and I don't even know what the select board would think about.
See what.
Right.
The wind, how the wind is blowing.
Right, right.
I think it, it would be. Better for, for them to take the lead on it. Because primarily our, our. Input to that would be to help to define what it is and to work up what, some standards for it.
We need, yeah, we need to know the volume.
Yeah, what, what are they looking at, what would they like?
Right. Yep.
And who would be the landlord?
The, the, I, I'm assuming that whoever owns the land would contract with them, or if it's town owned land. If they're going to be selling the units.
Well, saying if it's town owned land. Then the town would become landlord.
Not necessarily.
That, that does, just because it's town owned land, it doesn't mean that the town is going to rent the units. The town may very well say, we've got this extra land, we will contribute it to the project.
Correct.
So that you have a place to put.
It could be a whole bunch of different things.
We can lease it as if we were.
I'm just saying, so the town doesn't become landlord.
Now, now, it would be a negotiated situation that we would. Now, now, it would be a negotiated um situation that we would have to pull together a fairly extensive.
One of the big obstacles, though, is is the water source, unless it's on Route one.
Yep.
Yes.
A good supply of water.
Yep.
It'd be tough.
It could could very well be, and that's part of the whole um issue of, you know, where are the parcels? And then they would need to decide um where they wanna target and do some due diligence. Have engineering firm come in and do, you know, water sampling, um test boring. I mean, it it's it's gonna be a little ways out there.
Yep. And that that's why I think we should let the let the selectmen take the lead on it, because they're going, they're the ones that are actually going to have to address the issue of land.
Yes.
You know, if 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 an if we get an application in front of us like the subdivision that we had tonight, we can always say, you know, here's an alternative to what you're looking at. And I I found it interesting that it wasn't until we came suggested duplexes that it came came out that they actually wanna have workforce housing.
Right.
You know?
Right.
I think the difference is though, and not not, I don't know this person or anything.
No.
She owns a land, gonna build the houses for workforce, whether she's going to charge them rent to live there or sell it to them, but she could go back tomorrow and say, yeah, I'm just putting them up for sale.
Yes, privately.
There's nothing tying it to workforce where this, I think, would actually.
And that that's again, that's where the Board of Selectmen would have to come in because
Right.
We cannot tell you that's workforce housing.
Right.
And and these are the restrictions that are placed on it.
You can't restrict in any way, who she rents to. Yeah.
Right.
We're over our skis to a certain extent. I think we have to wait and see what.
Right. We'll wait and see what they what they have to offer.
Yeah, but this applicant that we had today, they work twenty four hours a day along the way, and then also her workforce also has to be governed by uh federal regulations.
Yep.
Because of uh security of overseas shipments and everything else. So I mean, uh and she could be a tough cookie to work for.
But to me, that that's the big argument that says let the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen are ultimately responsible for what happens in the town. From that, from it, from that point of view, it's not anything that we have control over.
Uh it still would be a long process.
Oh, yeah, it'd be a long process.
Sound approval and everything else.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, could be years.
Yeah.
Cause they. I think it's an honorable thing to go out.
Yeah, I don't hear anybody object to it, Lee J.
Yeah, no, and I think that's that's the only thing I need to bring back at least to Keith is that, you know, it sounds like the planning board is interested in hearing more and and um, you know, we can start talking um with um the coalition and and.
I honestly think that that workforce housing is an easier sell than affordable housing.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I do not wanna tell Marty's favorite friend, um Charlie Contractor, that he has to sell Harvey homeowner this house for a certain amount of money because it has to be affordable. I at the the conservative in me just rises up and goes, I don't think so.
Right, well, building affordable housing, it has benefits to the developers as well. I mean, so and then you get federal funds.
But if they wanna do that, let them do that. I'm not gonna stop them from doing it. I just, I don't think they should be telling them.
There are financial reasons to go ahead.
But there's a difference between being the guy building it and wanting to do it and getting the financial breaks and.
The guy being told you have no choice.
You will do it.
Well.
Right, okay, is there, are are we done? Somebody make a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
We don't have to vote on it? Wanted to be on the record to say no.